We'll call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July 11th, 2017. And can I get confirmation from anybody of the appropriate meeting notice?
Yeah.
The meeting, I was just telling Teresa, I'm doing it all. I'm recording the meeting. I've taken minutes of running the slideshow. The meeting was published at Piggly Wiggly, Dave's Ace Hardware in Milton City Hall.
Thank you. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is Dave on?
Yes.
Okay. All those opposed? The motion carries and we have an agenda. Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Is anybody interested in speaking? Nope. Okay. Item number four, approval of common council minutes from June 20th, 2017.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from June 20th, 2017?
Seconds.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number five, discussion of possible action regarding Resolution 2017-17 authorizing the transfer of land to the Meat Market of Milton LLC located at 329 South John Paul Road.
If the council recalls, back in early June, they approved a transfer of land between the City of Milton and Russ Grober, the owner of the meat market over on John Paul Drive. The council unanimously approved that transfer. This is the resolution indeed that would effectuate that transfer. If there's any questions, I can answer that. One recommendation that was brought to me via the Plan Commission is that the Plan Commission made a part of their motion that Mr. Grober does move forward with his intentions of paving a portion of this land to be transferred. It was recommended to me that a timeline be put on that so there's a degree of certainty that that improvement does be made, is made. There's not any, we don't have any reason to believe that he won't do it, but that was a recommendation that was given to me and I thought it seemed to make sense. So you can do with that as you please.
So at Plan Commission, they didn't put a date on it?
They did not put a timeline on it, no.
But they recommended that the council put a timeline on it?
An individual who was on the Plan Commission recommended that to me.
But that wasn't formally voted on?
Nope, it was after the fact.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry to overcomplicate it.
I think that's appropriate. Could I make a motion that affect that by, I don't know, July 1st of 2018 that Mr. Grober paves the portion that was discussed and approved by the Plan Commission?
In addition.
In addition to the
Resolution.
Resolution itself. Yes. Thank you.
I would second that.
So that's, you're not approving the resolution as prepared, you're approving the resolution with this additional, with this condition. Is that correct?
Correct.
Or is that appropriate?
Yes, you're good. You're good. And Linda, you're good with that?
I was wondering if we can add stipulations on his sign also with this resolution or is that not appropriate?
Well, it's not in this motion, so it's not appropriate at this time unless you want to do something different with the motion.
It can be addressed as a part of the resolution, proving that the mayor is correct. It would need, first you'd need to vote on this motion and if you defeat it, then you could present something else.
Or I could withdraw, correct?
Correct.
I can withdraw my motion and await a combined motion, if that's the way to put it.
And then I would withdraw my second.
Okay. We're back to square one.
We don't know what you're gonna say.
So maybe you might want to tell us about the motion you want to make.
I think that, I think putting a timeline on the paving of the parking lot is a great idea and that I would like for that to be in addition to the resolution, but I'm also wondering if we can put a timeline on the appropriate signing for the facility.
Is there still an issue with that?
Yeah. I don't believe that there is any issue with the existing signage. Can you provide more information?
There was an issue about six, eight months ago, I think, that they were supposed to be taking their sandwich board.
Oh, yeah.
But I think it's been resolved.
Yeah, and that's already addressed by ordinance. If you're talking about the temporary sandwich board sign, yeah. I guess I would look to Mark. Can you add something to a resolution that already is an existing ordinance on the, I don't know what we would say to him in the resolution, please follow the ordinance?
Yeah, the, what you're proposing as a condition is different than the condition you've mentioned that's been mentioned so far, which requires an affirmative action to be taken for the resolution to become effective. So it's a conditional resolution. What you're proposing is a resolution to authorize transfer of land subject to continuing to comply with the city ordinances. So in which case, I guess you'd be asking for a reversionary clause in the event that he didn't comply with some ordinance. I don't know if that's what you really intended.
Right. So if he didn't comply, we would take the land back?
Right. Because certainly the city can, has the ordinances in place that it can prosecute if they aren't, if anybody's not in compliance with ordinances. So that might, if that's your intent, that's probably the better way to approach it, be my suggestion.
Is that your intent?
Right.
Yes, to take the land back?
No.
Okay.
Just to make sure that the ordinance is followed, right?
So Larry, you could do your motion again. Go ahead, okay.
So I move that we approve the resolution and with the additional condition that the parking lot paving is completed by July 1st, 2019.
18.
18. I'm sorry, 2018. Thank you.
So again here, you're talking if it isn't completed, then you want a reversionary clause?
I
You're not asking for some action to be taken before, you're asking for an action to be taken before it's transferred. So what you're saying is that this property will not be conveyed to Meat Market of Milton LLC until such time as the parking lot is completely paved. That's the effect of the motion.
That wasn't my intention. My intention was to make sure that he doesn't.
We couldn't even really have, Plan Commission couldn't even really do that either. I mean, I mean, they could, it's just complicated. Like, we couldn't, like, send this back to Plan for review or?
Well, Plan Commission, I think their role is just to find whether or not the property is needed by the city. That's really in, in whether or not it should be conveyed. The terms of conveyance are really up to the common council.
Okay.
And so
My intention wasn't to stop the conveyance. I just wanted to find a way to
And I understand the intent and probably the most effective way would be to say it'll be conveyed upon X happening, which may be parking, paving the parking lot, excuse me. You can do that, but I just want to let you know that that's the effect. So if it takes them a month to pave it, then upon paving, it'll be conveyed.
That makes sense because then if he wants to go ahead and do it now this summer, he can't, right? We're not stopping him from doing that. But we are asking him within the year that it's taken care of.
So, yeah, so I guess just how you want to handle it. If you want to convey it now, you can't put conditions, if you want to convey it immediately upon your vote, then you can't put conditions on it. If you, if you are willing to wait some period of time to have it conveyed, then you can make him meet, meet, she said, the Meat Market of Milton LLC meet certain conditions before you convey it. That's your choice.
Well, what I'll do is modify, since I'm making the motion, I guess I can modify it. Then I would make the motion that, that we approve the resolution with the condition that the parking lot, with the condition that conveyance will not occur until the parking lot is paved. That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. So are there any further questions or discussions? Everybody clear on what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. And we've learned even more than what we thought we knew when we came to it. Thank you, Larry. Discussion of possible action regarding a Class B beer license request from Timberhill Winery LLC located at 1223 East Doors Lake Road.
Amanda Snuffle, the owner and agent for Timberhill Winery, has applied for a Class B fermented malt beverage license to allow her winery located on East Doors Lake Road to also serve beer. This is now permissible by local ordinance based on the adoption of ordinance 431. She has spoken at the last couple of council meetings as to her intent to expand her business to allow for the sale of beer in addition to her wine sales. And based on the ordinance, if the council has any questions for her ability to meet ordinance 431, I'm sure she would do her best to answer those. Otherwise, it would be the council's discretion.
Correct. And also just to note that the, what I call the companion ordinance, which would be the ordinance amending or creating section 14392D, which calls for the adoption of a policy. I think you were provided with both of those ordinances in your packet, so.
Do the question, do people on the council have questions about the adoption of the policy Mark just talked about?
I have questions in general.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
About, about
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, if you don't mind, or you can sit there. Either way, it doesn't matter.
Well, if she's, if she holds the microphone, Dave can hear.
Yeah, that would be good.
I have any questions?
Yes, if that's okay. Do you have any concerns about being able to meet any of those requirements?
No, I don't have any concerns.
Okay. And the patio area is kind of going to be, how do I say it? You're gonna be able to keep an eye on the patio area? Is that a fair way to put it?
Yep. We currently routinely check on it when people are out there.
Okay. The reason I ask that is if people were to buy beer and then go sit on the patio and then other people came into the patio from a back way or whatever, you guys would know that? Or you'd be pretty sure you'd be able to spot that?
Yeah. Yep. Right now, where the front area is situated, we can easily see when cars pull in. And so anytime a car pulls in, if they don't automatically come in the front door to the winery, then we go outside to, you know, see who's arrived and greet them. Just aside from safety, just as good business practice, you definitely want to be greeting anybody that wants to come in, so.
Any other questions?
Question for you, Al. What other Class B liquor licenses do we have in the city or for beer?
For
The ones she's applying for?
Other Class B licenses?
Which one of other establishments?
Well, this is a Class B fermented malt beverage. So the only other one that would be similar to this would be North Leaf Winery and Famous Amos. Can you, I know you don't know them often, but those that only serve beer. So places like Junction Pub and Red Zone, they have, they have a Class B intoxicating liquor license.
It don't before you, so would entertain a motion to approve or deny the request?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for a Class B beer license for Timberhill Winery.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations. Any general items that would not fit under committee reports?
I have a general item that I would just like to share. I just want to remind everybody that the prairie at Cross Ridge Park is in full bloom. And this is exactly why we do the prairie seed collection in October, so that we can continue to keep it going. And it is truly beautiful. So if you haven't had a chance to go out there, then I would encourage you to do so. And don't forget about this collection, the third Saturday in October.
Thank you very much. Any committee reports? Safety?
Yes, gathering plates.
Plates. Who wants to go first? Don't jump all at once.
Go first, yes, unless you want to, Teresa?
Stark Preservation, we're looking at having a seminar later this year for dealing with stubborn vacancies downtown. We're going to invite people from all over the state to come in attendance. So we'll have more details later about that. I think you'll be posting some stuff on that, too. So I wanted to mention that.
Perfect. Thank you. Teresa? Is it a swing band?
No, it's from, it's a And then otherwise, another place will be closed for the last week. For the anniversary celebration at
Thank you for the warning. So you know I'm still gonna do it at midnight than I did before.
That's right. I did prepare for you, but I think that'll be something to about the whole committee.
The library is planning on a library lope. It's a fundraiser for the teen portion of, well, it's fundraiser for the teenagers in the library, for their little area there. And right now, the library's looking for sponsors. So if anybody's interested, please get ahold of the girls and guys down at the library and they'll be able to give you some directions. And then I also just wanted to let you know for our Milton guide that the tourism committee did, we will be going out in the next month and seeing if anybody's interested in purchasing ad for that. If there are any businesses out there who need any of those brochures or flyers, please let us know.
Did the library get a donation recently? Was it from JP Cullen or something?
Yes.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five thousand dollars. Yeah. So that's exciting.
That's it.
Five thousand for five years. Great. Any other committee reports? Staff reports? Al, anything?
No staff.
No staff here.
No, no major updates that I can think of last week. I think we're all still getting back in the non-Fourth of July.
CDA.
CDA met yesterday. They had their third meeting, in, third meeting in probably about five weeks. They finalized kind of the brainstorming initiative as far as items that they would like to potentially address. The next meeting will be July 31st at 3 o'clock, in which we will start to develop a work plan that they will hopefully then begin to implement or at least create, you know, a working document starting on the 31st. So it's been very, very good discussions and a lot of good ideas in those three meetings.
Will we be able to see that work plan when it's fleshed?
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yes. Absolutely. Yeah. It included, included the, where they were up to at this point in their, in their most recent packet. Yeah. So that showed all of the, yeah, okay, you saw that.
So that was, that was part, the big part.
That was the brainstorming and then they're gonna, then they're, they're gonna take that list and then break it down into three, four, five items that they want to start to tackle.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody else? All right. We have come to the entertainment portion of the city council meeting and we have, we have a video to show and it's really kind of fun. It's Rock County First Responders and Chief Morecourt and I, and I can tell you where I'm at in this video, got to participate in it and it was, it's a lot of fun. It's a good team building exercise for the county and it really promotes, promotes our county great, so.
Change of authority.
Feel free to move around. And our fire department was there, too, and some of our equipment. So be looking for those. I already went down there twice. You'll have to remind us. So of course, the city council will be putting their own lip dub together. We should do, challenge the school district, a little competition.
School board?
Yeah.
There you go.
So for our team building exercise, that was not it. What is your favorite dance to do or watch or favorite musical or favorite movie, musical on screen or favorite dancer? Anything dance related and artistic, yeah.
Oh, geez.
He was in last year's, too, and he had the saxophone. So it was, yeah, he's great.
Okay, I'll start.
Okay.
My favorite memories were growing up in the Appleton area. There was a disco called Big Daddy's. And back then I was walking and, and I was known to bust a few moves out there on the, on the dance floor. So I had leisure suits. I had two different leisure suits and a big Mr. Microphone hairstyle. And so if you can picture that. So that was me. And now it's musicals. I love musicals. Just enjoy going to them and seeing people put energy into their music and talent. Yeah. Sound of Music is still one of my most favorite musicals, actually. And Seven Prides for Seven, how's that called? Seven, you know that one, the western musical. I like that one. Seven Prides for Seven. Yeah. So those are my favorite.
Thanks. Okay. Dave or Teresa? Dave or Teresa? Cool, thank you. Mark, what's your favorite dance move that you break out? Or anything else that fits into our category?
Say, uh, favorite dance would be polka, gotta do that. And favorite mov- movie musical offhand, cause I like things a little different, the Rocky Horror Picture Show.
I've never even seen it. Maxine, you want in, you want in on this? Oh, nice. Next? Thanks. Does the courier wanna chime in?
No, thank you.
Say Newsies.
Linda?
Favorites, I really, I, I, I love The Sound of Music and My Fair Lady. I, I grew up watching these movies with my mom. She was a singer before she met my dad. And, um, so I guess, um, I'm gonna say, just from a childhood memory, Chitty Chitty Bang Bang. Because I just love that show, as a matter of fact, so much that I have the actual VHS tape. Um, and I don't have any favorite dance. I just get out there and, and just move.
Good job. Jeremy?
I don't think I really have a favorite. To touch on something we haven't said here, I could've said Newsies, cause my choice here is gonna be based off having two sisters and a wife who watched it over and over and over again, and therefore I did Dirty Dancing.
Yes. Ryan?
I'm gonna go farther back than anybody else says, I think, with the dance. I prefer the Virginia Reel, which would be fitting for what that is. It's a very classic, very, very famous dance from about a hundred and fifty years ago. So being civil war reenactor, yeah, pre Charleston, pre all that, yeah. Lot of fun. Um, and then also, I was recently, uh, well, last year I think I was exposed to Fiddler on the Roof and enjoyed it quite a bit. There's a lot of other music, cause I like two, I, but that one lately, I guess, would be one stuck in my head.
Um, I love The Sound of Music. Grew up watching that. Um, Dirty Dancing is my favorite movie one, and, um, I love the salsa. I don't personally salsa, but I really like that dance a lot.
I certainly don't have a favorite dance. I'm not, I'm not a dancer by any means. Uh, but traditional musical, I would have to go Sweeney Todd. Non-traditional musical, I would say White Christmas. And then kind of a musical-related movie that I absolutely love is called A Mighty Wind.
Need to have council movie night now.
I love West Side Story.
Oh. A plus for team building, A plus.
Can we place this on the next agenda so Dan and Howie have to answer?
Yes, yes, absolutely. They have to demonstrate their favorite dance.
Dan, actually, Dan mentioned that to me today, and he jokingly said, "Well, my guess is Denise will make the answer."
Our next meeting is Tuesday, July eighteenth. That would be next week at seven PM here in council chambers. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor? Those opposed, the meeting is adjourned, seven thirty-five. Good job.